Well, good evening everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight for the city council meeting. We're going to start off with a special proclamation for Girl Scouts. I have with me tonight a number of lovely Girl Scouts in the audience, but standing up here next to me is Susan Gregemeyer. And I'm going to read a quick proclamation for you before we invite all the girls up to introduce themselves. Whereas, throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, their premier organization, fore and leading authority on girls, builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. And, whereas in partnership with nearly 14,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts of Western Ohio yearly serves 50,000 girl members in 32 counties throughout Western Ohio and southeastern Indiana. And, whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And, whereas over 50 million women have enjoyed the benefits of the Girl Scout leadership experience as an American tradition for over 104 years. Now, therefore, I Joanna Garcia, Vice Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 10th through 16th, 2019, as Girl Scout Week in the City of Beaver Creek and applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership development of this community's girls. So, thank you very much. I have this for you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say before we bring up the girls to introduce themselves?
Oh, no, I don't think so. I think, girls, if you come up, let's show the community some of these Girl Scouts. Thank you for this.
We're so happy to have you here.
So, let's just make a line in front. So, we have girls that represent almost every level in Girl Scouts here. I'm Susan Gregemeyer, and I am one of the service unit managers for Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. And so, that means I get to just help keep track of what all these girls are doing. And I will tell you that in Beaver Creek, we've got about 1,000 girls who are Girl Scouts, and about 500 more adults who help the girls do the business of Girl Scouting. And that Beaver Creek is a fabulous place to be a Girl Scout. I'm part of an active-duty military family, so I've done Girl Scouts in lots of different places. And I will say that this has been one of the most satisfying places. We have the support of local government. We have the support of our schools, of our churches, of the businesses in Beaver Creek. And we can do a lot with girls to help them be girls of courage, confidence, and character that make the world a better place. So, I'm going to pass the microphone along, and I would love these girls to introduce themselves and tell you what troop they are in. In Girl Scout speak, a troop is a group of girls, maybe about 10 of them, who are all working together on common goals. And so, we have lots of different troops represented. So, you can just say your name and what troop you're in.
My name is Ayla, and I am in Troop 33339.
My name is Jennifer, and I am in Troop 30595.
My name is Miranda, and I am in Troop 32348.
My name is Eva, and I'm in Troop 33339.
My name is Kaylee, and I am in Troop 34343.
My name's Ashley, and I'm in Troop 33331.
My name is Deira, and I'm in Troop 31933.
My name is Kim, and I am in Troop 32725.
So, thank you, girls, for being here. If we had time, I would interview them and ask them about all their favorite things and everything about Girl Scouts. But there's two girls in particular I want to point out. We just had for Girl Scouts of Western Ohio, our Girl Scout Gold Award Ceremony. A gold award is the highest award level that a Girl Scout can earn. Boy Scouts have an equivalent kind of award. It's called the Eagle Scout. And we have two girls here that have achieved their gold award. So, Jennifer Meek and Deira, just say it, Deira. Thank you. I would've said that, but I was scared. Venka Tramani, thank you, have both achieved their gold award this year. We had seven girls achieve their gold award this year from Beaver Creek. That's an outstanding number for an entire council.
Yes, well, we're going to have the council, they want to come down and take a quick picture with the girls.
Oh, great. And we have gifts. Oh, we have a gift for you before we do that. Jennifer? So, Ms. Garcia, were you a Girl Scout when you were a girl?
No, I did not.
Oh, well, let's fix that right now.
You're wearing the correct color, I think.
Yes, so, yeah, so Jennifer has for you a pen to give you that will make, pardon, you don't have it? Do I have it? I have it. Now Jennifer has a pen. And so, we'll want, we want to give you this pen so that you can at least be an honorary Girl Scout for today.
See, I did wear the right color.
You did. That's perfect. All right.
Thank you so much. We'll just get everybody together, and we'll get a quick picture. So, if the girls would like to come over here, gather around. You're the center of attention, not us. So, you guys can come on in and get in the center. Can you get us all or do you need assistance?
Yeah, yeah, come just a little bit closer.
I'm going to be short in front of you. Young girls. All right, well, girls, thank you so much for being here. It's always an honor to have you at our meeting.
Hey, girls, we've got...
I really appreciate it.
Before you go, we've got gifts to hand out. Everybody grab one and give to a member. And I would like to recognize some of those 500 adult volunteers who are here as well.
I'll trust you.
So, we do, we do also have an attendance. So, Mrs. Laura Lamb, who is a troop leader, and Mrs. Michelle Grojean, Mrs. Kim, Jennifer Litton, I'm sorry, and Devin Reedy, some of those 500 volunteers that we have that are helping.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And thank you to all the volunteers in the audience today. I can only imagine the amount of time you put into all these wonderful girls. I got to meet some of the gold award winners. They are phenomenal young ladies, and I know these little ones will grow up to be just as wonderful as the older girls. So, thank you so much for being here. We're going to head back up to my seat, but thank you so much for coming. I did get my favorite hooky, so thank you.
They're probably going to disappear.
I will guard these with my life.
They're everywhere right now.
They are.
We need more. We can, we can make that happen.
No, I'm talking about him, not me.
Well, let's have a call to order, please. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Stone.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda before us this evening. Is there any discussion about the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with a public hearing this evening.
You want to do prayer and pledge?
Pledge. I guess I will do the prayer and pledge. That would be a nice way to start. All right, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Upton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garcia. Now, we have a couple of scouts, boy scouts and girl scouts in the audience. You guys come forward, please. All right, I'm going to ask you each to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask you to remain standing. As we gather here in the harbor of your safety, we thank you for your fellowship and family. We ask that you will strengthen us, restore us, and inspire us with your love. Lord, will you fill us with your peace so that we may journey onwards? Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Upton, and the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. Now we can have that public hearing. 06-6, Specific Site Plan Number 3, NOAA's Event Venue.
This is an application requesting the approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a two-story, 7,027-square-foot event venue facility on 2.878 acres of land. The property is located on the east side of Mission Point Boulevard, approximately 700 feet south of Colonel Glenn Highway. The property is further described as Book 1, Page 3, parcel, part of Parcel 2 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you very much. Do we have any applicants in the audience this evening? How are you?
All right. How about yourself?
Well, thank you.
My name is Chris Winkle. I am with NOAA's Event Venue, and address is 47 Greenfield Drive, Milford Center, Ohio. So, we're here, glad to be here today for our specific site plan. Tell you a little bit about NOAA's Event Venue. We are a corporate business meeting and reception facility, event venue, that we cross the country nationwide. We currently have 44 locations open across the country. We are with another three right now under construction. The closest ones to you are is Blue Ash. We have one in Blue Ash. It's here. It will probably be opening here beginning of May. It's probably the closest one. And then, the next one would be Toledo. So, we have a new construction in Toledo, which is very similar to this model here that we're doing. The one you'll notice in Blue Ash is one of our older models, so a little, little bit of a different style. So, what we do is we cater to businesses and, and obviously weddings. During the weekdays, we cater to businesses that they use our facility to come in to do, you know, a lot of professional development, continuing education courses, you know, stuff like that. A lot of people rent our place for off-site interviews. We tend to go into office areas for that, for that reason, in that what we find out across the country is that Class A offices, the high-end offices, they don't have enough meeting spaces. So, a lot of times those companies that come in there and rent those spaces, they don't have enough meeting to do a presentation for a corporation that's coming in and that kind of stuff. So, they come and rent our facility out during the week in order to do that. And then, on weekends, on Fridays and Saturdays, we rent out for weddings, is what we end up doing. Our facility will actually, we will only seat in this new facility, 250 people. That'll, that's our max capacity. We could, of course, do more, but we sell the view, we sell the building, the look, the feel, and everything. And we find that as soon as we go over that number, you don't have a good time. And, you know, we work, we base on word of mouth, so we want you to have a good time. So, our concept is, is that we're, this is our new concept that we're doing. Like I said, Toledo is the new, is the first one. It's under construction for a two-story model. Our other ones, as you'll see in Blue Ash, if you get down to Blue Ash, it's a one-story model. So, what ends up happening in that one is, is that we have two stories. On the first story, on the second story, what we end up having is, is we have a, what we call a large conference room, and, or actually, we call it our small conference room, our small conference room, and it's pseudos as a reception area, or as the ceremony area where, you know, we'll say, we'll do 150 people up there. And it also has two small rooms, which pseudo for the small interview rooms and stuff like that during the week, but it also pseudos for the bride and groom room. So, and then, so what ends up happening is, is they go up, have their wedding ceremony, go down into our lobby. Our lobby's a little bit larger than normal, and then, so it ends up being, in our lobby, we have what we call the cafe area. And the cafe area is just where we, you know, business meetings, you have your, your donuts, your bagels, and your coffee, and get your coffee and stuff there. And on your, and on the weddings and stuff, that's where the alcohol and, you know, and the bar and stuff is. And those, you have your cocktail hour out there, and then you go over to the, over to the main hall. The main hall is two stories, full two stories, and it's half the building. In that main hall, one of our unique features that we have is we actually have a raised stage. So, you actually have a stage that actually goes up one step. So, it gives them the option to decorate however they want. If they want the wedding party to be up, they can be up, you know. And if they decide that, if they decide that after the wedding party's done and they want to make it a dance floor, we can lower it down and make it a dance floor. So, we make it a little flexible and give them a little bit of options and, you know, decorating options, too. We also, that's one of the cool things that we have, too, is we actually have lighting packages, you know. So, you can actually have packages that our lights will come down, and you can put chandeliers on them, and there's actually with the lace, you can hang the lace from the ceilings and do all that kind of stuff for that kind of stuff that we end up doing there. On this site here, we're looking at a, you know, 3.17-acre site here. We have, I think, 94, 99 parking spaces on it. So, it's about what we need on our facility, you know, with the 200, 250. We typically end up, we've done surveys across the country because it's usually what we get asked, the first thing we get asked, "Do you have enough parking?" And, you know, based on that is, you know, we found that actually, there's about 2.6 guests per car. So, that's what ends up helping us in calking it out that, hey, that's about it, you know. And, and it helps us do that. And then, the same thing that we do at the same point, is I didn't bring that up, is that with this 250, what we find out average-wise, too, across the country with all of our facilities, our average weddings, about 170 people. So, it also is, you know, gives us a little bit more flexibility on that end. So, the construction of this building is actually going to be a tilt-up concrete, so it's going to be a smooth concrete structure with windows and everything along that line. And then, it has a wood trim feature, and the wood trim feature actually is, kind of like a metal siding, a metal or a heavy-duty construction. And I got samples sitting there if you want to feel it and everything, though it's a pretty heavy-duty sample and everything along that line that we end up using for it. And that's our theme. We're seeing, seeing the push, and that's what we find about being across the country. We, we see the trends, you know. We have some of the barn trends, you know, and everything that I know, since I live around here, too, so, you know, you've seen those around there. But the modern warehouse, that kind of look trend is kind of, you know, where the guests are. So, we do have that, but then we also have decoration packages that make it look a lot nicer in the inside and, and everything along that. We like the two-story feature of this thing, too, that the reason, one of the reasons we like going to two-story and being in the office areas, it also gives us a chance that, heaven forbid that NOAA's doesn't work out, this can be converted very quickly to a two-story office building. So, our investors and everybody love that also because then that way, if something should happen, you know, there's a two-story office building sitting there right there that they can go rent out. So, it helps them in order to recoup their costs and everything and keep moving at the same point. And it gives us that flexibility when we come into here and say, hey, you know, we know, we know people are, you know, get nervous about, you know, especially the events and stuff. We're not, we're not like, you know, the standard banquet hall. So, I mean, you know, we've been, we've been in business, been doing this for 11 years now. We actually started during the recession and have survived all through the recession and keep going. And, you know, our goal is, right now, we do about 10 a year. That's what we're doing. So, we, by, by the end of this year, we will have Ohio built out. So, it'll have, we'll have facilities, obviously, Blue Ash, we'll have two in Cleveland, we have two in Cleve, we'll have two in Cleveland, we'll have two in Columbus, and then Toledo. So, hours of operation, pretty standard during the week. There'll be like 7 to 9. The most of that time is, though, during the week, it'll be, you know, the later hours will be our event planners. We have three event planners that'll be there, and that's just so that they can circulate because whenever we do have an event, they will be there. So, there will be somebody there. The only time we will not have somebody there is on a Sunday, and that is if we donate it to a church group or somebody like that that needs a facility to do it, we will do that. But then, we put the requirements of them cleaning up and everything on top of them instead of having cleaners do it and stuff like that. So, we will have, so we do have them. So, that's what a lot of the evening hours are, is just them being there to show tours to the, to the brides or to people, you know, for the facility and everything along that line. So, that's usually then. And then, during the week, during the weekend and everything like that, it's usually about 9 o'clock until midnight is what our hours are. So, you know, if you figure your, your standard wedding, you know, 9 o'clock, people want to get in to decorate and do their thing, you know, have their, have their wedding at 3:00, and then, you know, dinner at 6:00, and, you know, then they're all filtering out by 9, 10 o'clock or whatever. And those last few years, just the, everybody cleaning up, getting the wedding gifts out of there and that kind of stuff. The other thing, I did want to make sure that you knew that any time that, one of the things that we do require as part of our contracts with the, with the weddings or any party is anything over 50 people, any party over 15 people or 50 people or that serves alcohol, we require there to be, we usually try to hook up with the police, the local police department to have an off-duty police officer there or a security company or something of that sort, anytime alcohol is served and parties larger than 50. So, we do that for our protection, the guest protection and the public's protection at the same point. We are, we do not have a full kitchen. I forgot to mention that. So, we don't have a full kitchen. Everything is catered. So, what we do is we become into towns like this, and we have, usually when we come in, they contact us. So, local catering vendors, DJs, photographers, they usually contact us. We have what we call a preferred vendor list. And so, what they do is they get on that preferred vendor list, we do hand that out to our, you know, we offer that as a, an offering to our, to our guests, you know, to our patrons, but they're not required to use it. So, if you want to, you know, go to Costco and do a cold cut or something along that line, as long as it meets the normal building codes or health codes that you're allowed to do it, we don't, we don't stipulate against it. So, you can actually do that and bring in, I don't, you know, if you have somebody else that you want to bring in, we don't have a problem with that whatsoever. You're pretty much renting the facility from us. The rest is on you. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Stack?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The case you have before you is MXPUD 06-6. It's the third specific site plan for this PUD. They're looking to construct a 7,500-square-foot banquet center on a little over three acres. Again, as the applicant stated, this is in northern Beaver Creek. It's west, actually, of 675 in the extreme northwest corner of the city. So, it's south of, you know, obviously, the base is to the north, and then Riverside is to the west. This property was part of a large rezoning. The three acres we're talking about, I highlighted in yellow, but this was a large 135-acre PUD that was rezoned back in 2006. And it had a mixture of several different types of uses. Among the list of allowed uses is modified list of O1 uses, and banquet halls and centers are allowed as a conditional use within an O1 district. So, when we went, we took this planning commission in February, they got approval of the conditional use case as well as recommendation for approval of this site plan, which both, with both resolutions are in your packet. Seen here is an aerial of the three acres. You could see it's mainly, I mean, it's mostly a vacant piece of property. It's got grasslands and bushes and, and other vegetation in it, but it's mainly just a flat vacant piece of land. Just to the south of it, it's hard to see an aerial, but there is a creek that kind of meanders through the property here. So, they, they stopped the proposed development at this location so that there wasn't, we weren't touching that creek at this time, or there's no need to extend Mission Point Boulevard, which is an existing public road. The, seen here is a site plan. They're proposing one access point, and again, they're proposing to line it up with the access point that's just to the southwest for this office building. So, it lines directly up with that, but, yeah, there's a single access point. Based on the, the size of the banquet center, there is no calculation specifically for banquet centers, but we found a similar use in the calculations for parking. They needed to have one for every three people using the center at any, the maximum capacity of the center. And they stated that they won't have more than 250 people. That requires 87 parking spaces. They show 98, so they, they have ample parking. One thing, we added a condition back in this back row of parking, there was a lot of parking spaces in a row, and we typically try to avoid that for aesthetic purposes.
There's a lot of what?
Parking spaces in a row.
Okay.
I think there's like 20 back there, and we try to avoid that. So, we added a condition that they put an additional landscape island to line up with the islands that they had already proposed. Seen here is the architectural. Again, it's a two-story building, 7,500 square feet, has 27 feet to the top of the parapet wall. It's about 90 feet wide and about 50 feet in depth. The applicant, as they stated, it's a, it's a gray tilt-up concrete wall, mainly wall building. They have this, it's an aluminum, it's a metal accent panels, it's wood look, but it's on all four elevations. You can see that they do carry that around on all four elevations. And then, they have black awnings, they're metal awnings over the different windows on all the elevations. So, there are four-sided architectural features. They do show screening of any of the rooftop, all the rooftop units. It's something that's unique to Beaver Creek. We don't have any buildings that really look like this. So, you know, we were excited to see something, something different that we haven't seen In terms of the landscape plan, we did, we did ask them to carry, there's some landscaping features in the office buildings to the south. It sees at the edge of the parking lot, it's kind of a semi-circle of bushes and shrubs, and so we asked them to carry that around the parking lot to get, have a theme coordinated throughout the entire MXPUD. So, with that, they're going to, also, again, they're adding that landscape island, so there will be ample landscaping out in the perimeter of the parking lot. And you could see that they do propose a lot of landscaping throughout the rest of the site around the building and the entryway. In terms of the lighting, they're proposing full cutoff fixtures, no concerns with any kind of spill over. The nearest residential property, it's well over 1,100 feet away, so, you know, we're not worried about any kind of light pollution or anything like that to any residential neighborhoods. They show one sign, no ground sign, but one blade sign on the corner of the building that's three foot by eight foot. You know, planning commission and city council, both, planning commission and city staff, both recommend approval of the applicant's request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So, as a public hearing, we do have the opportunity for public input. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come up and ask questions or have any input on this matter, you would have three minutes to talk on this topic? Anybody at all? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public input section and move over to council input.
I would just like to thank staff for the presentation, and I'd also like to thank the applicant for coming to Beaver Creek. This is a great opportunity for us with Right Pat and with all of the other businesses that we do have. This is just a great opportunity for those. I know there's some smaller venues that kind of do that around Wright State, but having the university, I think this is a great opportunity for the vendor or the applicant, but I also think it's a great opportunity to have more people come into our community, so I'm thrilled to have it.
Very good.
So, I'm curious about the catering kitchen. What kind of a space is that?
Kind of space, meaning?
You're going to have the caterers come in and, and then serve dinner out of what, so I was just curious if, if you wanted to change it into being a kitchen, would you be able to? I mean, how big is it?
It is about, I'm going to tell you, it's about 20 feet by 12.
Okay. It has a whole bunch of counters and drawers and...
It has counters in it, it has a refrigerator, it has a refrigerator in it, has a warming in it. It has a two-comp sink. The reason we only go two-comp is because we don't want them washing dishes in there because we don't want to go that way, so we just give them a two-comp. So, if they drop something on the floor, they can scrub it off and keep reserving. So, you know, and it's big enough that they, you know, enough for them to room to, if they're plating food, they can plate food in there and everything along that line. We also have a door that goes out to the outside there, so if they need to go out to their vehicle or go out and bring more food in or whatever, you know, and, and stuff like that. So, but it won't have a kitchen hood in it or any of that kind of stuff in order to be a full kitchen.
But there's a direct access for the, for the delivery truck?
There is, absolutely.
And then...
It's something we've learned in not providing it.
Yeah. I'd like you to share a little bit more about the technology for...
We are high-end for audio, video, and everything like that.
So, I thought if we could just share a little bit about what kind of meetings and, is there Wi-Fi and...
Yep, there's Wi-Fi, all the high-end, all the high-end. We do have a, in the main hall above where the stage was that I was talking about, there's actually a screen that actually recesses down so that you can use that. All the jacks and everything are sitting there for, in order to be able to do all that. That's in all the rooms. So all the rooms are in there. The bride and the groom's room, the smaller conference rooms, instead of having dropdown screens in them, they actually have big screen TVs up there that everybody can do and on that stuff. And then we actually carry all of our own tables and everything along that line. So we can actually have conference room tables and everything set up on there. So everybody has access in order to be able to present that.
So the one in blue ash is operational?
It will be in May.
Oh, so it's not operational yet?
It will be in May. It opens sometime right around May. I don't know the exact date off the top of my?
But theirs is not a two-story version?
There's not. Toledo is the closest, Toledo is our first two-story version that we are building right now.
And it's not done yet?
No, we actually put the walls just went up two weeks ago.
So you've been a business for 10 years. Where is there one that's operational?
The closest operational one to you guys here would probably be New Albany on the east side of Columbus.
Oh, so it is all, it is operational there?
It is operational, yes. So that's, that's our closest one, I would say, to here. You know, the next closest one to here, Mentor, Ohio, is another one that's operational. Louisville might be the next one. The one we just opened in Southfield, right before Christmas, was Southfield, Michigan. We have one in Southfield, Michigan, and Ann Arbor, Michigan. Is that, so those are about the closest ones. Other than that, we're pretty well spread out. We're based out of Salt Lake City. So we have like three there. I think we got five or six in Texas, Arizona, New Hampshire, Florida, North Carolina. Pretty spread out.
Okay. I'm excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or input?
Yeah, just, first off, this building looks phenomenal. It's pretty exciting to have out there on Mission Point. I did have a question for staff and maybe you can throw into it as well. Just a little concern about the stream. I know that there were some modifications to cater around the stream. How, how close are we getting to that?
Well, when they do their grading plan, the pond is actually up front here. It's a wet, they're gonna have a wet pond. So it's gonna have all the aeration devices.
Right, but you said?
But the stream is way, is down on this side. And that's why originally they were looking at moving the building closer over here, but then that was going to potentially cause some stormwater runoff to go into the stream. So that's why it's?
Where's the parking lot on here?
The parking lot's in the center. The building is here. It's kind of hard to see on this one, but yeah, they, going the wrong way, sorry.
That's fine. My concern was that they were gonna be very, the parking lot was gonna be close to the stream.
No, the stream's in the south.
And then salt and other runoff may get to the stream. But I think you're far enough away and the topography is going the opposite way, it sounds like.
And the, yeah, and the, and the water's gonna have to drain into the stream. And Ohio EPA has water quality requirements. So they have a small pond that they, for, you know, silt to drain down into so that the water that goes into the stream isn't, well, it's already filtered by the EPA.
Will this building be visible from outside the park?
I mean, you should be able to see it from Mission, or from Colonel Glenn. I don't think you'll be able to see it from 675.
But you will be able to see it from Colonel Glenn?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be far away, seven, 800 feet, but?
But you'll be able to see it?
Yeah.
You should be able to see it from Mission, or from Colonel Glenn because if we're our, we are really, that where that building is, that we are actually at the high point. So it kind of goes up and then drops back off down to that stream. We are sitting pretty much right at that high point where it starts breaking down. And that was kind of why we ended up doing, what you're saying is, is that, you know, on your stream, there's actually probably, if you were to take our back property line to the stream, there's about a half an acre still there until you get to the stream.
Okay.
So, and to emphasize a little bit more so you guys understand and what we're working on with the developer at the same point. What we did with our pond, our pond right there is much bigger than it needs to be. So what we did in our design with that and working with them is there's a ridge line that goes up, like I said, that's the high point that goes off to the stream here and then the front that goes off to the front. We've included just over six acres of that area for their future development will drain through our pond in order before it goes out. So then that way, they won't have to have a separate pond unless they incorporate more than that six acres. But that six acres, pretty much a swath between, you see our, I'll call it our northern property line there. That's where, with working with the developer, we kind of changed things a little bit and we pushed our property line out to there. That's where they're proposing their future drive. So they'll have outlots that are up front. And then, you know, they'll have a road that will come back and service that. So that's kind of pseudo where that's gonna end up being. So anything between that road and that ridge point is all coming in through our pond and we're gonna handle it for them.
Very good.
Will there be a fountain in that pond?
There will be a fountain in that pond. That was one of our requirements. That was one of our requirements to make it a white, wet pond. So we will have a fountain in there to keep that theme going.
Any other questions or input from council?
Yes, for, for staff, is there a sign at the entrance off Colonel Glenn into Mission Point?
There's a large sign for the, for the development itself, yeah.
Now, I forget, do they co-locate the tenants and the park?
No, there's no tenant spaces. I mean, that's just, it's just like, it just, it's for the park only. I mean, for the park in general, yeah.
The park itself, it says Mission Point Park, okay. And is there any future plans to develop the, closer to Colonel Glenn?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if you look at?
The only thing I mentioned is, I'm just worried that, you know, over time, they might get lost in there in terms of their visibility.
As the park develops, I mean, they may, I mean, you may not be able to see them from Colonel Glenn. I mean, that's how, depends on what is developed out in front. So I don't think that their, their business model really requires the visibility. I mean, it's kind of a destination place. That's why they don't have a ground sign. Because it's, you know about the place before you actually drive by and you know where you're headed. You're not, well, let's just stop. Oh, there's a event venue, let's stop. So I don't think their business model requires visibility, but for now, they will have that visibility.
Thank you.
He's correct. Our business model, though, we rely on, we know that everybody will go to their hotel, type it in, type in the GPS, type in the GPS and go for it. That's why we don't waste our money. We'd rather spend our money on landscaping and everything else than monument signs and everything because, you know, we have a few locations that we do have to put little directional signs because we do, I mean, this is actually kind of more out front than we normally go. I mean, I, you know, when I sell the real estate, when I go buy real estate across the country, I say, I want that back piece near your detention pond or whatever that you don't know what to do with. And, you know, I don't, I can't afford to pay for the upfront McDonald's piece or retail place upfront because I don't want it. I don't want to be up there. I want to be back. That's where people want to have weddings. They don't want to be, you know, up on the freeway and doing it, so.
Madam Vice Mayor, there's no further comment. I motion to move ordinance 19-02 to the second, third readings.
This is first.
Oh, my apologies, I gotta read the whole thing. I'm looking at the next ordinance, my apologies. I'm, I move for the purposes of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for Noah's event venue on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Code 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 19 listed. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of the council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're excited about this new project.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll be started by Matt.
Look forward to it. Thanks again. Ordinances, resolutions and puds.
This is the first reading of an ordinance increasing the annual salary of the members of council to $12,000 effective January 1st, 2020, per section, Charter Section 4.10 compensation.
Okay. Do we have any comments? This is a first reading?
Yes, there was a work session, as councils aware. And per the charter, one of the requirements is that in odd-numbered years, or odd calendar years, of which this is one, and it has to be adopted also per the charter by June 1st. So it has to be, so to start the three readings, we're, you know, structuring this to start now, you can get the three readings and still have, you know, have adoption, the 30-day adoption period within the required period before that June 1st deadline. So even though the deadline to put, you know, if we had ever go to election or something like that, on some, some charters sometimes require elections. That, that's actually in August. But on our charter, it requires adoption. It will not take effect. Anyone sitting here today will not get this unless you are running for a new term. That's very important, too. It'll be on a new term. And so that, again, is a requirement of the charter. It's very specifically cleared out, set forth in there. So it is term-based, has to be done at a specific time, and this is structured that way. There's also, there's no distinction under our charter for mayor, vice mayor, council member. It's straight salary. And also, I think the one thing I want to note in here is that I put in here is last changed, I believe, in 2006. That was the last, last effective time. It was, which meant it actually came into effect in 15, took effect in 16. So. Any questions?
You said that wrong. It came in 2006.
It came in, yeah, started in '05, I'm sorry, 2005.
So it's passed in '05.
'05, because that would have to be an odd-numbered year. So it'd be '05, took effect January 1st. And this, same thing for this one.
Thank you. And for everyone in the audience, we did have a work session on this. So I don't know if there's anything else council has to talk about tonight or we have a motion?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. I think we left it open, the amount that they're, we're looking to raise too. Does that give us the full year credit in the?
Yes. Correct, yes.
The retirement first, thank you.
Yeah, the current, current full credit is like just over $7,900. So, yes.
Because I knew that was one reason for looking at this, is we had fallen behind.
Councilmember Upson, could you kind of brief the citizens? Because a lot of them may not understand that when speaking?
Sure. So the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System requires that so much be essentially paid in each year. And under the current salary for the council, council members are not credited for a full year because the salary is set underneath the minimum. So this new proposal will get us above the minimum and allow those that would like it, a full year's worth of credit.
Thank you.
The new salary would be, or the new compensation would be $1,000 a month.
Yeah, which, which I believe at the time it was last changed, it was similarly slightly above, somewhat above the, what was required for?
Minimum.
Minimum at that point. It, but over time, it's been raised. And I expect over time, if it goes another number of years like this, it probably will drop down under it because it gets periodically raised.
I would move for approval of ordinance 19-02 and move it to the second and third readings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 1902 to second and third readings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to decision items. We have a few board and commission appointments this evening. And we last left off in the middle of the Charter Review Commission. So we'll need a motion to re, renew that?
Madam Vice Mayor, I would move for renewal of the previous question of the appointment of the Charter Review Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we can remove, renew the previous question for charter appointments. Do we have a motion to open the nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to open nominations, please, Vice Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations, all in favor?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Close that one. You're going to three dots and my close. You didn't change it to PC, to my PC.
Isn't technology fun?
No.
Disconnect. It looks like something like disconnect. Okay, now, three dots again, so. You're not changing it to PC first. You gotta change that before you say disconnect again.
Madam Vice Mayor, I think during these downtime, it's customary that you sing a song for all of us.
Yeah, my voice is just a little hoarse this evening. Or I would gladly indulge our wonderful audience.
You got a number?
Right, at this point, lullabies is really on. I got going right now. Now, I appreciate you putting this together for everyone.
I'm sorry, open.
Melissa made the motion, Councilmember Littoral made the motion. I didn't hear who seconded. Do I have a second to open nominations? Councilmember Curran? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have, all in favor of opening nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will open nominations. Do we have any current nominations?
I'd like to nominate Cassie Barlow.
Second. Go, need a second?
No second.
I'd like to nominate Vicki Jambro.
I'd like to nominate Brian Jarvis.
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Meyer.
I'd like to nominate Don Adams.
I'd like to nominate Christopher Stein.
I'd like to nominate Mike Canita. If?
Okay, do we have a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, nominations are closed. So what we'll do is we'll vote on?
Nope. Because there are only seven appointments and seven spots for this commission, we only need to make a motion to appoint these members.
Fantastic, so we're good. So we're set with the Charter Review Committee?
I would approve. I would move that we appoint those that were nominated.
The seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint those nominated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thanks. We have a new Charter Review Commission. We also now have to move on to the Youth Development Council, was the other one for the evening. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to open nominations, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Ashley Hale. Or is it Hall? Thank you, Hall, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Anna Merrick. Make a motion that we close nominations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, nominations are closed. Okay, so now we'll just move on. Do we have a motion to appoint those that have been nominated?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ashley Hall and Anna Merrick to the Youth Development Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a new Youth Development Council. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to council time. And we can start with Councilmember Littoral.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to congratulate Captain Jeff Fiorida of the Beaver Creek Police Department. He's always been an outstanding officer and he has earned the designation of the Certified Law Enforcement Executive, which is a C-L-E-E. Captain Fiorida's been with the police department for several years. And I'm also thrilled to announce and congratulate him on being accepted to the FBI Academy. That is a wonderful accomplishment and just can't say enough things about him and our fine police department. Again, they have, they always do an excellent job. The other thing I would like to mention is, just in case, we don't have, we have no other snow events. I want to thank our, snow team is what I like to call them. Our drivers have just been out there and done a tremendous job with the elements that we've had. And so can't thank them enough for all their work. And hopefully, we have no more storms as spring's coming, the 20th. And then the only other thing I would like to add is that please, I've had at least five phone calls regarding the school levies and the bond issue. So just as a reminder, while we all love and work in the city and we're a great team, the actual school board does not have anything to do with city council. So it's a separate entity. While we do have a joint meeting once a year, we like to know what's going on in the schools and the schools are very important to all of us. Please contact your school board members. There's a flyer. The school board is having meetings at separate, or several schools. I think actually they have one this evening at Coy, I believe. So with the upcoming levying and the bond issues, again, that's a separate issue than city council. So the school board has their own, they're under their own jurisdiction, thank you. So, but thank you for the calls. And we, as always, anytime you have a question, but I wanted to make sure I expressed that. We had, I did have four or five calls, so thank you very much.
Mr. Rushing?
No report tonight, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Van? All right, councilmember Van?
The mayor and Ryan and I and, you there Saturday at the Lego thing? The robot, no? No. We went to the robot thing at Wright State where the high schoolers compete, it was just amazing, it just takes my breath away to see that our youth are learning those CAD and technical computer skills at such an early age, it's just phenomenal, and the Beaver Creek team was doing very, very well when we were there. And I think Mayor Stone has invited them to come and visit our city council again. I also had the pleasure of going to the Pancakes in the Park, that was the Green County Park District event at Russ Nature Center, that was terrific. We are so lucky to have the Russ Center being developed into a convention, into a meeting space for people in Beaver Creek. And so those floor plans, they've actually started construction, it's pretty, pretty awesome, pretty proud to have that kind of park recreation, or park and nature reserve facility in Beaver Creek. I represented city council at the Green County Cats bus meeting, I don't think there was anything that I need to report, but they're, they're doing well, it's, they really meet a need that has not met other ways, and we're, again, we're, I appreciate what they do for, for Beaver Creek and the county. Last year I, was, or over a couple of years, I've been working on peace events and international peace things. I talked with the mayor, last year we talked about maybe having the city council establish a peace committee. With my conversation with the mayor, I drafted kind of a job description. He's not here, I think that maybe we can talk about this at a work session next week or something, and then move forward. I do have copies that I can share with you, so you can think about it, this is a draft to have input on, so we can talk about it at one of the next times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I think that sounds good for a work session. Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, just two quick things, I want to wish good luck to the Wright State men's basketball team in the Horizon League Tournament, I believe semifinals are kicking off in just a few minutes. So let's wrap this up, I want to get home and watch the game. Yeah, quickly. But secondly, I want to just give another plug to our staff, I sat in on a meeting with some of our counterparts from other communities about two weeks ago, and it was really a kind of a best practice sharing of, you know, what's our community do versus theirs, where can we collaborate together? And I got talking to some of the other folks there, and it really highlighted how well our staff, one, does their day-to-day job, but then goes out and gets grants. I won't name the names, but one community said, "We haven't gotten a grant since 2009." And I thought, are you kidding me right now? You know, like, we live on grants, if it wasn't for grants, we wouldn't do what we do. And the question that he had was, how do you write a grant? How do you request money for a grant? And it's like, I cannot believe our staff gets the millions of dollars that they do every year, and then there's communities right here in our own, our own county, quite honestly, that don't. So kudos again to our staff, I mean, across the board, roads, police, parks, everybody. I appreciate everything you guys do to help us, you know, get the grants and keep our dollars lower. So, that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Curran.
Yeah, I passed out a flyer, everybody should have it on the desk. In cooperation with the Senior Citizen Center and their Partner of Recreation Committee's been working on lifelong learning courses that would be available beginning in April 1st, you'll see on the bulletin, inside are the first group of courses, all of these are volunteer heads of the individual courses, nobody's being paid, and they're going to be over a course at the Lofino Center, they're about three weeks in length, it's an opportunity for seniors, for people to come in and take these courses for free, and we, you can see, we're drawing them from Wright State, we hope to draw them from Clark State, Sinclair, UD, any, we've had a number of retirees that said they'd love to come in, I was talking to a gentleman today, wants to give a course on automotive history, and it was kind of interesting listening to him. But you can see, at least at a glance, the first courses, they have one on the iPhone that they're going to be, they're going to be presenting, and then we have another one on the Frontier West, another one on three movements in early 20th century, and the history of classical music to kick us off. So I'm real excited about it, Mr. Jim Wright is the, is the chair of the committee, he's been working very hard to put this together, and I wanted to present it to council tonight, so at least it would, you'd see it, see what we have in the process. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
What space will it be?
I'm sorry?
What space of the senior center will it be?
Well, that, the, there's only two rooms in that new building, and they're going to be using the one where the screen is with all the, all the goodies.
Thanks.
And looking forward to it.
If a senior, or, if a member from the senior center invites you, can you attend if you're not the recommended age? Because these are some great courses.
Need some help with the iPhone?
No, I like the Pro Vision era.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Curran, I was just having dinner the other night with someone who said that they used to offer these courses for the iPhones and they don't anymore, and I think this is fantastic, I could use the iPhone brush-up, I don't know about councilmember literal, but I could use it. So thank you very much for bringing that to council's attention. I just want to, again, thank the Girl Scouts for coming in and seeing us tonight, introducing themselves, also for the wonderful cookies, everyone loves Girl Scout cookies, so we like to thank them for that, and just, I'd like to take a few moments to recognize, I was able to go to the Gold Award Ceremony last weekend, and I got to meet all of our girls from Beaver Creek, and I want to just briefly run through the eight ladies that we had and their accomplishments, because this is a really big achievement. Valerie Dranchak is a senior at Shamina Julian from Beaver Creek, her project was entitled Owen's Place Friends. I don't think there's anyone on this board who does not know the lovely Gussie Jones and all that she does for Owen's Place. So what Valerie did was started a club at St. Luke School to teach kids about disabilities, and then have them plan activities for other children with disabilities such as autism and Down Syndrome. Taylor Huff is a senior at Beaver Creek, she held a four-day STEM day camp at Quest Gymnastics, and she incorporated daily STEM activities with exercise and gymnastics, kind of a fun way to get everyone interested in STEM. Kaylee Laid is a sophomore at Beaver Creek, she had the Creative Community Art Project. She designed and painted murals in two rundown family-style bathrooms at Angels Pass Park in Beaver Creek, and they were highlighted during Art Fest. Stephanie Mullins is a senior at Beaver Creek, she had a project entitled Spin, Toss, Catch, Color Guard. She held several workshops for middle girl, middle school girls, and to teach them the Color Guard basics, to encourage them to participate in the high school Color Guard Ensemble. Jody Pierce is a junior at Beaver Creek, her project was Empowerment Through Art, she also held a four-day camp at the House of Hope in Xenia to focus on art projects and cooking. Alicia Smith is a freshman at Wright State, graduate of Beaver Creek High School, and her project was First Aid and Hygiene Education. She taught proper hydrating, including dental, and basic first aids to students at Fairview Elementary in Dayton. Dira Venkatra, I'm gonna, Venkatra Mary, she was here this evening, she had a project entitled Safeguarding Personal Information Online. So she held, held several workshops on how to prevent identity theft and opt-out of data brokers. She is currently working with legislators to get the bill passed in Ohio to tighten regulations on how data brokers collect information. So she's already presented this to Senator Hackett and is in talks with her, him about this upcoming legislation. And lastly, Eileen Yang is a junior at Beaver Creek, her project was Skills for the Future. Now this one was really interesting, she told me the reason she did this was because her brother was going off to college, and she said her brother had zero life skills that he could take with him to college. Her words, not mine. And she realized that a lot of teenagers going off to college have this same issue, where they need basic life skills, I told her my husband would probably use the boiling water skill. But she did a five-day life skills camp to teach teenagers how to live independently once they leave the home, including cooking, sewing, car care, financial matters, and some were on topics that they already covered in school, but I, I thought all of these projects were so amazing, and it was interesting to hear how they came to these conclusions because they all had a personal experience with them, which made them even more exciting to hear about. So again, thank you to the Girl Scouts for coming, for our pins, for our cookies, and just for being a great presence in the city of Beaver Creek and great representatives. So now we can move on to our city manager.
Well, thank you. All right, so it, last year, the number one question, or early in the year, 17 and 18, was, when was Dayton Xenia going to get finished? And now the number one question is, when is, when are you guys going to resurface Fairfield Road? The resurfacing of that, we said this soon as the weather breaks, and it's, cross your fingers, councilmember literal said about the snow, snow drivers, and I'm hoping they can put those plows away for the year. But we have a, beginning March 18th, a contractor scheduled to begin work at the catch basin repairs and curb replacement. So work's going to be along North Fairfield Road between North Drive and Lake, Lakeview Drive, so basically, by Mike's Car Wash, clear down a little bit past the Nazarene Church, if you're not familiar with the road names. Should have minimal impact on traffic, but once this work is complete, we'll begin the pavement for repairs and resurfacing. As you know, that's probably definitely going to be, need to be milled down in certain spots, it's, it's pretty rough, and of course, they'll go down, the number one cost for that, and cost of change orders, is when you start milling down and you have to go deeper to repair, the deeper you go, the more expensive it becomes. But that's going to be a nice stretch in North Fairfield, and then we're already working on grants and everything in front of the mall and by the exit ramps and stuff, because that is, that is in need of repair as well. Moving on, our resurfacing program, speaking of that, we're going out for bid, it's now out for bid, and bid opening is March 20th at 2:00 PM. When you want to check more out, go to our website at beavercreecoheidi.gov, and you can start seeing the list of roads that we're bidding out, and alternate roads, so you can see if your, your road is on the list, and if not, and what, of course, the better our bid is, the lower the cost, the more roads we can do. So we're, we just did a major bid out of a project, actually it was Shaker Town, and the big, you know, three and a half million dollar project, but it came in significantly under budget, which is great, because I'm hoping the pavement comes in significantly under budget. But we'll see, because the more it comes in under budget, the more we can continue to pave. So anyway, under beavercreecoheidi.gov, under the Engineering Department, you, you can check out the 2019 pavement, repaving program, resurfacing program. All right, Beaver Creek Golf Club, trivia night, just want to feature this, March 22nd, six to nine, for those that love trivia, the bar and grill opens at six, trivia starts at seven, first place teams win the foursome of golf, second place wins a four adult brunch ticket, so hey, there's something on the line here. So there's no cover charge at the golf club, and if you're good at trivia, I'm not very good at that, but some people know a lot of, a little bit about everything, so join us at the golf course on March 22nd. And speaking of the golf, Seventh Annual Resident Appreciation, so March 28th, 29th, 30th and 31st, the city of Beaver Creek residents will, with a valid ID, receive, receive a complimentary green fees. Now, simply make a tee time and fill out a short survey, cart fee is additional though, and for questions, you can contact Beaver Creek Golf Course at 320-0742. I tell you, if you, I, everywhere I do go, I went to a mayor managers' meeting a couple months ago, and a guy approached me, and he goes, "That's my favorite course." I said, "We won't start naming golf courses," but he lives south of town, he goes, "And I come to Beaver Creek." I live real close to a particular one south of town, and he goes, "But Beaver Creek's my favorite to play." So, and gave high compliments to the staff of, and how, how the customer service and everything, so that was good to hear. So come out for more information, contact the golf club, and this is your chance, try it out for free, and then come back and be a customer. I did want to go state that we are, for, councilmember literal mentioned earlier Captain Fiorida's accomplishment, we had, I talked in a department head meeting, and we are going to, planning on the next meeting, the regular next meeting, doing a little presentation to council, to show all the accomplishments that staff is doing. You know, we normally do the number of years of service and stuff that where council reads and honors the employees for that, but there has just been so many things that staff have been doing on accomplishment, accomplishments, such as, and I just want to highlight that, we'll mention this next week, but at the Chambers event, we did have Mr. Jerry Russell was, received the City of Beaver Creek Employee of the Year during the Chambers Commerce Annual Meeting, so congratulations to Jerry, he's in our Public Services Department, so when we have something going wrong, he's the one we, we call, and he's the one comes running. So congratulations to Jerry. But we have many, many others that we just wanted to have received awards and recognition, and that we want to put before council and the residents, they need to know what all that our employees are, are up to in receiving acknowledgements and accomplishments, not only for themselves, but for the city as its, as a whole as well. So other than that, congratulations to Jerry, and we'll have more the following live meeting. So that's all I have tonight.
Great, yeah, I know everyone on council's going to be looking forward to that, and just seeing, we've all talked about how great our staff is, so hopefully councilmember literal didn't jinx us, and we don't have more snow coming, since she coordinated our road services.
It's Tuesday, Thursday.
Right? I'm hoping, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Do we have any citizens in the audience that want to come forward or have any comments? This is your time, you have up to three minutes to speak. Any young gentlemen who were taking notes in the audience this evening that would like to come forward and introduce themselves? No? Okay, I won't put you on the spot. Blue hoodie? No? Okay. All right, if there's no other further business, and no citizens that have to come before, do we have a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Doubtful. All right, thank you very much, it was great seeing everybody, have a good evening.